Lord's Prayer, and then we'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we recite the Lord's Prayer, I want to just take a moment. We're going to have a moment of silence. I want to continue to remember the family of Commissioner Frank Parton, who recently passed away, as well as, if we could at this time, have a moment of silence and continue to remember the family of Chuckie Godfrey, who is another commissioner that we've lost. So we'll have a moment of silence for that, and then I'll lead us in reciting the Lord's Prayer. So if you'll join me in a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our day to bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Commissioner Madron, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we are on item number three on our agenda, which is consideration of appointment to the Sevier County Board of Commissioners, seat B. If we now can proceed to item three? Uh, yes. Thank you. Before we do that, we've got the roll call. So you all would please mark present. Madam Clerk, would you be, please announce the number of present and absent?
Twenty-two present, one absent.
Okay. Now, we'll proceed to item number three, which is consideration of appointment to the Sevier County Board of Commissioners, District Five, seat B. This seat will be vacated January 1st, 2025, due to the resignation of Commissioner Fred Ashley. And in accordance with TCA Title V, the Sevier County Board of Commissioners will now fill this seat, which will begin on January 2nd, 2025, until the next election in 2026. Commissioners may make a motion to nominate a candidate to fill this vacant seat. The nomination must receive a second. Members of the audience may make a recommendation by stepping to the podium, and I will recognize you. However, a commissioner must, it must be a commissioner who submits a motion and receive a second to place that recommendation to be considered by the Sevier County Commission. The Steering Committee of the Sevier County Commission advertised in the newspaper and has submitted a recommendation to the Commission. And again, this is simply a recommendation from the Steering Committee of Mr. Rick Valentine. And that recommendation must also receive a motion and a second if it is to be considered. So now, I will recognize anyone in the audience who wishes to stand up and make a recommendation of anyone who is to fill the District Five, seat B. And if you would, if you have a recommendation, if you would come to the podium and state your name and what that recommendation is. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to come and make a recommendation concerning District Five, seat B? Okay, seeing no one come forward, now I will open the floor for nominations. Do we have, we have a motion and a second? And then I assume that is for Mr. Valentine? We have other nominations from the floor concerning District Five, seat B. Seeing no other nominations, and there be knowing no discussions, Madam Clerk, would you please proceed to the vote? Commissioners, would you please cast your vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Okay, Mr. Valentine has been properly elected. He will be sworn in after the first because the resignation is not effective to January 1st. So we have Mr. Valentine here. Would you stand up, Rick, and allow us to be recognized? Look forward to Mr. Valentine being a part of this group. Now, we will move on to item number four, which is consideration of the appointment of the Board of Commissioners, District Five, seat C. District Five, seat C of the Sevier County Board of Commissioners have been vacated due to the passing of Commissioner Frank Parton. So in accordance with TCA Title V, the Sevier County Board of Commissioners will now fill this seat until the next election in 2026. The Commissioners may make a motion to nominate a candidate to fill this seat. The nomination must receive a second. Members of the audience may make a recommendation by stepping to the podium to be recognized by the Chair. However, a Commissioner must then submit a motion and receive a second to place that recommendation before the body of Commissioners. The Steering Committee of the Sevier County Board of Commissioners has submitted a recommendation of Mrs. Barbara Parton. That recommendation must also receive a motion and a second. I'll now open the floor for any additional recommendations to come before this Commission from the audience. If you have a recommendation, if you'd please step to the podium and state your name and state the name of the person that you would like to recommend. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to make a recommendation? Okay, seeing no one in the audience requesting to make a recommendation, I will close that portion of the proceeding and proceed to the next one, which is ask Commissioners to nominate and second for the position of Commissioner in District Five, seat C. We have a motion and a second, and I assume that motion and a second is to elect Mrs. Barbara Parton to fill the, an expired term of Commissioner Frank Parton. Do we have any other nominations from the floor? Seeing no other nominations, Madam Clerk, would you please proceed to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your vote? Any Commissioner like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-three yes votes.
Twenty-three yes votes. So we have now elected Mrs. Parton to fill the unexpired, the unexpired term of her husband, Commissioner Frank Parton. And because that vacancy is immediate, I'm able to swear Mrs. Parton in and allow her to take her seat on the Commission. Thank you. Okay. Barbara, if you'll raise your right hand. You want me to just read it all, and then you say I do at the end, okay? "I, Barbara Parton, do solemnly swear that I will perform with fidelity the duties of the office to which I have been elected and which I am about to assume. I do solemnly swear to support the constitutions of Tennessee and the United States and do faithfully perform the duties of County Commissioner representing the Fifth District, seat C, of Sevier County, Tennessee. So help me God." Okay, we're now officially Commissioner. Let's welcome. Commissioner Parton didn't want to say anything because of the emotional moment that this is, and I completely understand that. But I know she appreciates this Commission and her support in her serving the unexpired term. So, and we appreciate her being willing to step forward in doing that. Now, we will move, we have a number of recognitions tonight. In on item number five is consideration of Proclamation 2024-12-01, recognizing Dale Carr and his service to Sevier County. So we'll proceed to that proclamation, Madam Clerk, to bring that to the floor for action. We have a motion and a second to approve that, and I'm going to read this proclamation, and then, then we will vote on it. It says, "Proclamation honoring Dale Carr and his service to Sevier County. Whereas Dale Carr, a lifelong resident of Sevier County, has dedicated his life to public service, improving the lives of those in his community through leadership, integrity, and commitment. Whereas Dale Carr is a proud graduate of Sevier County High School. I might add that he was a state champion in football, leadership severe in TVA Accounting School, and earned his Certified Auctioneer Institute Certification from Indiana University, excelling in his profession as a Realtor and Auctioneer. Whereas Dale Carr began his distinguished career in public service as an alderman for the city of Sevierville from 2008 to 2012. Whereas he was first elected to the Tennessee General Assembly in 2012. Representative Carr has served as a strong and influential voice for the 12th House District, representing Sevierville and Sevier County with honor and distinction for 12 years through the 108th, through the 113th General Assemblies. Whereas during his legislative tenure, Dale Carr provided exemplary leadership as Chair of the Joint Government Operations, Education, Health, and General Welfare Subcommittee and House Property and Planning Subcommittee, and is a member of the Government Operations, Local Government, and Transportation Committees. And whereas Dale Carr's passion for serving his community extends beyond government, as he is a founding member and first treasurer of the Boys and Girls Club, a member of the Sevier County High School Alumni Association, and in active support of the Robert F. Thomas Foundation. And whereas Dale Carr is a devoted husband to his wife Joanne, a proud father to Brandon and daughter-in-law Jamie, and a loving grandfather to his granddaughter Finley Grace, who have supported him throughout his career. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Larry Waters, and the Sevier County Commission do hereby proclaim December the 18th, 2024, as Dale Carr Day in Sevier County, and commend Dale for his exceptional service, unwavering dedication, and enduring contributions. It is further ordered that the 1896 bell atop the historic Sevier County Courthouse shall ring a celebratory ring at 7:00 PM on this day to celebrate this occasion. So ordered this 18th day of December, 2024." So we have a motion and a second to approve this proclamation. Do we have any discussion or questions concerning the proclamation? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change your vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Twenty-four yes votes. It's been unanimously adopted, and I get the opportunity to present Representative Carr.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Did you say December the 18th?
Um.
Is that, I mean, is that?
We, um, we have, yeah, we have, we have staggered these bell rings
Oh, okay, okay.
over several days because we've got about five proclamations, and we didn't want to ring them all in one night, so. We'd keep folks awake in the city of Sevierville all night. So, Representative Carr, my honor presents you with this proclamation, and thank you for your service to Sevier County. It's hardly appreciated, and you've done a good job. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that, Mayor. Yeah, it's really good, though. I may say this word, absolute, absolute.
Well, if you're a politician, you've got to say a word to. First of all, what, December the 18th really hit my mind, and I really appreciate that date because you don't realize, nobody probably knows this, but December the 18th was my mom and daddy's anniversary. Of course, daddy's been dead since 2007. But I do appreciate this, and, and we're staying with my 91-year-old mother now. That's one reason I decided I'd go ahead and try to retire and stay with her and help her out. I do appreciate that. I got a call the other day from the Chairman of the party, and he said, "Have you talked to your counterpart coming down there?" And I said, "Yes, sir, we sure have. I've got him all lined out." But he said, "Well, Dale, the only thing I know about Mr. Fred Ashley is he can either talk as much or more than you can." So be ready for that. I want to thank everybody on the committee, and I want to thank the mayor again. I've known the mayor for a long time, and a lot of y'all for a long time. Thank you once again. This is an honor and a privilege. I do thank you so much.
Okay. Now, we are moving to the next proclamation. Consider, consideration of Proclamation 2024-12-02, recognizing Fred Ashley and his service to Sevier County. And you're right, Dale. I'd, if, I think we've elected somebody that might be able to out-talk you. So we'll now proceed to consider the proclamation. Madam Clerk, would you may leave, please, please move the proclamation to the voting screen? We have, we have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation, and I'm going to read it now. It says, "Whereas Fred Ashley, a lifelong resident of Sevier County, Tennessee, has dedicated his life to public service, demonstrating commitment and leadership through his distinguished career in law enforcement, emergency services, and local government. Whereas Fred began his career as Sevier County Sheriff's Office, where he laid the foundation for his dedication to serving the public, later retired as Battalion Chief of the City of Sevierville Fire Department. Whereas Fred has served the citizens of Sevier County with distinction as a County Commissioner for the Fifth District for the past 26 years, providing leadership and advocating for his constituents while playing an instrumental role in shaping policies in Sevier County. Whereas Fred most recently served as Chairman of the Budget Committee and Vice Chairman of the E-911 Board, where his leadership and dedication have had a policy of impact on the county. Red, whereas Fred's commitment to professional growth and service is evidenced by his graduation from Leadership Tomorrow, Leadership Sevier, and his certification as a Public Administrator through the CTAS, CTAS program at the University of Tennessee. He's an active member of the Republican Party and the First Baptist Church of Sevierville. Whereas Fred's dedication to family and community is reflected in his marriage to his wife Angela, and he shares four children and two grandchildren. Whereas, as Fred begins his new role as State Representative for Tennessee's 12th District, he brings within him decades of experience, a deep compassion for public service, and a commitment to continuing to advocate for the people of Sevier County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Larry Waters, Mayor of Sevier County and the Sevier County Commission do proclaim December 20th, 2024, as Fred Ashley Day in Sevier County, and thank Fred for his extraordinary service as County Commissioner and his dedication to the people of Sevier County and his exceptional leadership in local government, and wish him success as he begins his new role as State Representative. It is further ordered that the 1896 bell atop the historic courthouse be, shall ring a celebratory ring at 7:00 PM on this day to celebrate the occasion." Now, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion, questions, or comments concerning adoption of the proclamation?
I do this on Christmas days, and we such a gift.
Oh, yeah, we're, right, we can, we, we, we're going to wrap him up and send him down there.
I only thought you might ring that bell for all day long, for 24 hours, since I'm leaving.
We don't worry it out. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? After reading that, Commissioner Ashley, I don't know if this is going to pass or not.
That's the reason I voted for myself. I wanted one vote.
Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Okay, twenty-four yes votes. Proclamation is adopted. Mr. Ashley, if you will come down front, we'll be honored to present you with this proclamation.
There's no returns on that gift.
This to you.
I know, I know that Mr. Ashley is going to say something. I, I, I have kidded him a lot, but I've enjoyed serving with him for 26 years. He and I don't agree on everything, but we agree on a lot. But we've had some good discussions, and I can tell you this. He has a passion for this community, and he has had it for the last 26 years as County Commissioner, and I think he will represent Sevier County well.
Well, I don't have much to say. I know this has been 26 long years for the mayor, and, and he's right. We've disagreed a few times, but he's always come around in my way of thinking, so. I, I want to leave you with that. And Dale, the number one question I've been asking, asking for, can I talk like you? And I said, "I can give him a run for his money, but I don't have any hair." So I just want to say thank you, this Commission. I've had a great run here, and I truly consider everybody here a friend. So if I can ever do anything for anybody here, and I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again, it's the best job I've ever had. So, thank you. Thank you.
Why don't you give Angela a chance to speak? Tell us the truth, though.
Okay, now we are down to item number seven, which is consideration of Proclamation 2024-12-03, recognizing Dylan Loy and his service, Dylan, I'm sorry. That's right. In his service to Sevier County. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed to item number seven? Consideration of the proclamation. We have a motion and a second to approve it. I'll read it, and then give the Commission any opportunity to say anything that they'd like. Whereas Dylan Loy is a native of Sevier County and a proud graduate of Pigeon Ford's High School. Whereas he excelled both academically and as valedictorian and athletically, contributing to the school's success as a two-time state runner-up. And whereas Dylan has been recognized for his outstanding athletic achievements, being named to the 2023 Perfect Game All-American and All-Region Teams, being named the Tennessee Gatorade Player of the Year two years in a row, and being a three-time Perfect Game preseason underclass All-American. And whereas Dylan Loy has demonstrated exceptional skill and dedication as a member of the University of Tennessee baseball team, playing a pivotal role in the program's first-ever national championship, pitching two of the three College World Series final games against number-three Texas A&M from June 22nd to June 24th. Whereas Dylan showcased his talent and determination by throwing 4.2 scoreless innings of relief in the SDC Tournament Championship against LSU on May 26th, helping to secure that victory. Whereas, following his exceptional freshman year, he was named the 2024 National Collegiate Baseball Writers Association Freshman All-American Team, and in '23, '24, the first-year SEC Academic Honor Roll. Whereas Dylan's achievements have brought great pride to Sevier County and serve as an inspiration to young athletes and students throughout the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, Larry Waters, Mayor of Sevier County and the County Commission do proclaim December 16th, 2024, as Dylan Loy Day in Sevier County, and commend him for his exceptional contributions to athletics and academics. And it is further ordered the 1896 bell atop the historical courthouse shall ring a celebratory ring at 7:00 PM on this day to celebrate this occasion. We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Now, do we have any comments or discussion from the Commission? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Any Commissioner like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change a vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Okay, now, opportunity with the proclamation we have.
I did want to say this young man who played Sevier County crack and I bet for those of us who enjoy baseball, watching the UTE ball live here with excitement and did a good job and represents Sevier County well and we're extremely, everybody in Sevier County is extremely proud of him and thanking him for his service and his representation of our county. So, congratulations to him. Can you say anything you like?
Yeah, I feel good.
Sure.
Yeah, first things first, I want to say thank you to the Committee for providing this award. Extremely humbled to accept it. And I would like to thank my family, obviously, for always being there for me. But I mean, this day- But I mean, this day, it might have my name on it, but it's much more than that. It's not only me, but it's my team, and it's the community behind it. Without y'all, there's no way that I would be in the spot that I was being, so thank you very much.
Okay, now, if we could move to proclamation 2024-12-04, recognizing Jack McMahon in his service to Sevier County. Madam Clerk, if you'd please move to the voting screen. We have a motion and a second. Do, and let me read this proclamation. A proclamation honoring Jack McMahon in his service to Sevier County. Whereas Jack McMahon, a lifelong resident of Sevier County, Tennessee, a graduate of Pittman Center High School and Lincoln Memorial University, and a lifelong cattle farmer, was raised in Richardson Cove as a son of Fred and Archie Ray McMahon, and has dedicated decades of his life to serving the community through education, leadership, and public service. And whereas he devoted 34 years to the Sevier County School System, serving in numerous roles, including teacher, coach, principal, assistant principal, athletic director, and ultimately retiring as Director of Maintenance. And whereas Jack served as Chairman of the Sevier County Republican Party and as a state Republican Party Chairman, demonstrating his commitment to civic engagement and leadership. Whereas Jack McMahon was instrumental in advancing educational opportunities as head of the Sevier County Education Association, where he played a pivotal role in the establishment of the Sevier County Vocational Center. Whereas he served the community through his volunteer work with the Sevier County Rescue Squad, assisting in search and rescue missions to locate missing individuals in Sevier County and the Great Smoky Mountains. Whereas his dedication to sports and athletics was recognized with his induction into the Sevier County High School Sports Hall of Fame in 2006, honoring his contributions to student athletes and community service. Whereas Jack was elected as the first Chairman of the Sevier County Regional Planning Commission in 1995, a position he held with distinction until June of 2024. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Larry Waters, Mayor of Sevier County and Sevier County Commission, do hereby proclaim December 17th, 2024 as Jack McMahon Day in Sevier County, commend Jack McMahon for his exceptional dedication to education, civic leadership, and public service, as well as endearing legacy as an outstanding representative of our community. It is further ordered the 1896 bell atop the historic courthouse shall ring a celebratory ring at 7:00 PM on this occasion. Now, do we have any of the commissioners that would like to make a statement or comment concerning this? If not, Madam Clerk, would you advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you cast your votes?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Twenty-four yes votes. So, the proclamation is passed, and I am happy to present Jack with the proclamation. He'll come up.
And he may not admit this, but he is my general science teacher in my freshman year at Sperry Bay High School. You know, so he's probably partly responsible for what I turn out to be, but he never admitted it.
Folks, I appreciate this. I've not ever been accused of having to have a microphone, but I do appreciate this. This started a long time ago. My first job with the county was with the Highway Department, and Mr. Smelter, at that time, I had three road superintendents as supervisor, Mr. Omar Green, Mr. Earl Brannum, and Mr. John Rymo. So, Mr. Green hired someone, so that's where it all started. I better check, Mr. Waters may and ought to put all that on a retirement. It amounted to a lot, $6 a day, 75 cents an hour. That was before anything was taken out. So, it's been a long haul, we've gone and had to work with a lot of good people, including most of you, and we appreciate that. I appreciate the commission's work with us on the planning commission. It was tough to start with, but you gave us good people, you gave us three good planners, and they were good to work with, and so that end of it worked out real good. We didn't know when this thing started, though, that we were going to deal with a little cotton-headed boy out of Jones's Cove that was gonna be probably the longest-serving mayor in the history of, of the state. We didn't know at the time that we were going to have so many judges in school. We didn't know I was gonna have two twin row huffs, and, you know, also, out of that group of judges, one of them became State Supreme Court Justice. We appreciate all that. Then we didn't know that in 1964, when we handed a little blond-headed, cotton-headed girl a diploma, and she got on the bus for Nashville, that she was gonna be the greatest country music star of all time. So, we've had a lot of good honors through this, and this means a lot, but the working with these people and the association with you folks and all that means a lot more than this, and I appreciate the honor. I've got two requests, though. I don't think anybody comes before you without wanting something, do they? I've got two requests. One of them, and I should have touched base with Mayor Waters, I would like to see a resolution, just a simple resolution drawn up, to send to Nashville, honoring a good friend of mine and a excellent friend of Sevier County's, the Honorable Winfield Dunn, who passed away about three or four weeks ago. Winfield was one of the best politicians I ever worked with. He did so much for Sevier County. His fingerprints are stamped all over the county, including 66, including the state highway garage. Before him, we all had a pick and shovel, including the vocational school at the high school, including the stadium at the high school. Y'all didn't know that, did you? Somebody asked me, his fingerprints are all over that. So, Mayor Waters, I'm sorry I didn't mention four, but I'd like to see a simple resolution passed, and with it, first order of business for Representative, how did that sound? Representative Ashley to carry to Nashville with him, and his office staff can see that it gets to the proper places. But if that be an order, I'd like to see you all, if you feel like it, pass a resolution to that effect. One other thing, and this doesn't cost any money, a little over a year ago, a good friend of mine, and a former colleague, and a teacher in the Sevier County system retired, was entered in his household, brutally hurt and murdered, and to this day, there's been nothing on it, and they have had a lot of good information. I've given them a lot of good information. All I'd like to see is you push some buttons and help get this started, and all of you have got some buttons you can push, and that includes you, you've got buttons you can push to get these people off the street that murdered Dan, and that would make me a very Merry Christmas. But in regard to this, I appreciate it. If we can ever be of help, I always say, holler at us, give us a holler. You have a Merry Christmas. God bless all of you and, and Sevier County, and go Smoky Bears.
Now, consideration of proclamation 2024-12-05, recognizing Frank Parton in his service to Sevier County. Madam Clerk, would you please proceed to item nine? You bring up the proclamation. We have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second to approve it. I'll, I will read it and then allow the commission to make any comments they wish. This is a proclamation honoring Frank Parton in his service to Sevier County. Whereas James Frank Parton, a Sevier County High School graduate and a lifelong resident of Sevier County, dedicated his life to serving his community with unwavering commitment, leadership, and integrity, leaving a remarkable legacy of service and dedication that deeply impacted the lives of many. Whereas Frank was a devoted public servant, serving five terms as a 5th District Commissioner since first being elected to the Sevier County Commission in 2006. And during his term as Commissioner, Frank served as a member of numerous committees, including the Education Steering and Senior Citizen Committees, consistently demonstrating his commitment to enhancing the lives of Sevier County residents. And whereas Frank worked many years of dedicated service to Cherokee Textile Mills and Reebok Rockport, where his hard work and loyalty were evident throughout his career. Whereas Frank also made significant contributions to the community as a board member of the Sevierville Housing Authority, the Sevier County Seniors Association. He was also a devoted member of First Baptist Church and has served as City of Sevierville, City Council Alderman, demonstrating his commitment to public service. And whereas a lifelong sports fan, Frank was an avid fan of the Sevier County Smoky Bears and enjoyed playing golf in his spare time. He loved watching his children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren compete in many sports, rarely, rarely missing one of the games. In his youth, he excelled as an accomplished athlete in basketball, baseball, and football at Sevier County High School. Whereas Frank's legendary legacy extended beyond his professional accomplishments, as he was a devoted husband to his loving wife and best friend of 36 years, Barbara, a beloved father, grandfather, and great-grandfather to his children, Randy Parton, wife Catherine, stepsons Timothy Bush and Jeffrey, Jeffrey Bush, and Ashley, stepdaughter Marissa Lingfelder, and Tony, sons-in-law Sid Ombi and Mark Turner, and his late daughters Frankie Ombi and Lisa Turner, as well as numerous grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Larry Waters, Mayor of Sevier County and Sevier County Commission, do proclaim December the 19th, 2024 as James Frank Parton Day in Sevier County, commend Frank Parton for his exceptional dedication to public service, civic leadership, and the positive impact he made on the lives of countless individuals, as well as his enduring legacy as an outstanding representative of our community. It is further ordered that the 1896 bell atop the historic Sevier County courthouse shall ring a celebratory ring at 7:00 PM to honor and celebrate his remarkable life and contributions. So we have a motion and a second to approve this proclamation. Now do we have any discussion or questions concerning the proclamation? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Any commissioner like to change her vote? Hearing no requests to change the vote, Madam Clerk, please announce a vote.
Twenty-four yes votes.
Twenty-four yes votes. Proclamation is adopted, and I can send the proclamation to the family now.
And I want to say, on behalf of the nation and citizens, that we thank Frank for his service. He did any public service, he could always serve, he could always rely on Frank, as I already said, and he cared about the people of this town so much, and we all miss him great deal, and I know you all do, but he made great contributions to this town, and to protect the projects, so we thank, thank him, thank you all for sharing him with us for all of you.
I will try to say something at the time of that. On behalf of our family, we appreciate all of y'all's thoughts and prayers and support during our time at St. Frank's passing. And Frank was a dedicated commissioner, I will say that. He really enjoyed his opportunity to do that, and I want to thank people, commissioners, for giving me an opportunity to finish his term out. I will do my best. Thank you.
Now we're on item number 10, consideration of the minutes of the previous meeting. You have those in your packet. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. We have any discussion, additions, or corrections? Commissioners, move to the voting screen. Now, commissioners, cast your votes. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no requests to change vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce a vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Mission minutes are adopted. We'll now move to item number 11, consideration of report from commission committees. Madam Clerk, if you will move those reports to the floor for action. We have a motion and a second. Do you have any discussion or questions concerning the committee minutes approved? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, can we proceed to the vote? Commissioners, cast your votes. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no one requesting to change their vote, Madam Clerk, please announce a vote.
Twenty-four yes votes.
Mission committee minutes are adopted. We're on item number 12 now, which is public comment on agenda items or public comment on rezoning requests, and we have no, no one requested to comment on any agenda items, nor do we have any rezoning items, so we'll now move to item number 13, which is consideration of memorandum of understanding, 2024-12-01, Sevier County Board of Commissioners and County Mayor, regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding for the Sevier County Health Department. You have that in your packet. Madam Clerk, would you please bring this memorandum to the floor? We have a motion and a second to approve it. We have any questions? I think we have, is it fog here from the Health Department? Yes. And the Health Department requested this, this is just procedures for the- This is just procedures for the, for the act, the American Rescue Plan. We have to have this memorandum in place as we move forward with spending this money at the Health Department. We're doing some renovations up there, and I think they're using this money for that. And this is something that has to be in place that says that the county mayor's office will oversee it and will spend the money in the proper place. Do you have any comments and fogs that you'd like to make? If you come to the microphone.
So this is probably just an update. You might already know this, but she said that the new MOU designates the money since we won't be under contract by December 31st, and it will act as contracted funds until we're bid out and under construction.
Question. Thank you. It sounds like it. They're working on getting them out right now, I can see. Okay. Now, do we have any further questions or comments concerning the memorandum of understanding? A hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you please bring the memorandum to the floor? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Resolution properly adopted. Item number 14, consideration of resolution 2024-12-01, appoint members to the Sevier Do we have a motion and a second to approve it? Do we have any questions? Hearing no questions, Madam Clerk, would you please bring it forward for action? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, please announce the vote.
Twenty-four yes votes.
Resolution properly adopted. Item number 15, consideration of resolution 2024-12-02, appoint judicial commissioners for Sevier County. Do we have a motion? Do we have that in your packet? The two to be appointed are reappointed, I think. Chris Young, whose term expires December 31st, 2025, and Greg Howke, whose term expires December 31st, 2025. Those are reappointments. Do we have any questions? Hearing no questions, Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Commissioners, would you please cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Yeah. So that, yes, I announced Beer Board, and that was actually county commissioner, or judicial commissioner, rather. So, yes. So now we are on item number 15. That was item number 14. So we are on item number 15, which is judicial commissioner now. Mr. Rodriguez, Mrs. Rodriguez, I guess. We vote on 15.
Sure she is. But you're, you're serving elk and, yeah.
I had the wrong resolution. Okay, so we voted on both of those. Okay. Now, I think we're back to where we're supposed to be. We're on item number 16. Everybody know where we're at? I finally figured out where we're at. Took me a minute. I got item number 14 and 15 mixed up. Got too many papers up here. So now we're on item number 16, which is consideration of resolution 2024-12-03, to appoint members to the Sevier County Industrial Board. And the next appointments are for Candace Morton from the City of Gatlinburg and Phil Whaley, who is the chairman. Their terms expire on the Industrial Board, December 31st, 2030. So, Madam Clerk, if you would advance to the voting screen, resolution number 2023-12-03. We have a motion and a second to approve that. Advance to the voting screen so commissioners can pass their votes. Now, commissioners, cast your votes. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Now we're on item number 17, consideration of resolution 2024-12-04, to confirm members to the Sevier County Public Building Authority. Again, that's the same two members who serve on all three boards, whose term expires December Madam Clerk, if you would please advance the voting screen to resolution 2024-12-04. Advance to the voting screen. Commissioners, cast your votes. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Resolution properly adopted. Item number 18, consideration of resolution 2024-12-05, confirm members to the Sevier County Health and Education and Housing Facilities Board. Have a motion and a second to approve that. Again, that's Candace Morton and Phil Whaley, whose term expires December 31st, 2030. Madam Clerk, would you please advance to the voting screen? Any discussion from the commissioners or questions? Not cast your votes? Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Resolution properly adopted. Down to item number 19, consideration of resolution 2024-12-06, authorize county mayor, and this is on behalf of myself and the county commission, to issue a joint proclamation to honor the Sevier County High School football team on winning the T double S double A five A state championship. So if we could advance to 2024-12-06. Do we have a motion and a second? Now do we have any discussion? Let me say what is going to happen on this. We will write the proclamation, and at some point, Sevier County High School is going to have a celebration of the championship, at which time the commission will be invited, and we will present this to the football team. At that time, there were so many members of the football team, 77 total, and parents and so forth, we couldn't get them all down here. And they're going to have a, they're going to have a celebration. So we thought it best to present that up there, and this is simply authorizes this Okay, Madam Clerk, if you have moved to the voting screen, commissioners, are there any discussion? Hearing none, please advance to the voting screen. Please cast your vote. There we go. Any commissioner like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, please announce the vote.
Twenty-four yes votes.
Proclamation properly adopted. Item number 20 is consideration of resolution to authorize a submission of an application for the fiscal year 2025 to the State Community Development Block Grant Funds. We could now proceed to item number 20. Have a motion and a second. We could bring that resolution to the floor. When they're bringing it to the floor, this, this resolution authorizes my office to submit a grant application concerning water grant through the Water Committee. And we submit this every year, and I think the Water Committee's been working on this, right? Chairman of that committee is Commissioner Hurst, and the Water Committee's been working on this, and this authorizes me to submit it on behalf of the Water Committee. Other questions or comments concerning this resolution? Hey, Madam Clerk, you have advanced to the voting screen. Commissioners, please cast your votes. And this is in the amount not to exceed $1 million per project. We have that in the resolution. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Okay. Item number 21, consideration of resolution 2024-12-08, authorize the county mayor to issue a joint proclamation to honor the Seymour High School band on its achievements. We can proceed to item 21 now. The joint proclamation. And again, this is, we're doing this because there are so many members of the band, we probably couldn't get them all here, and the parents, so we're going to present it at an event at Seymour High School, where we'll invite the commission to join me in presenting this proclamation. So we have now moved to item number eight. We have a motion and a second to approve that. Do we have any questions or concerns concerning this proclamation? If not, Madam Clerk, would you please move to the voting screen? Commissioners, please cast your votes. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the vote?
Twenty-four yes votes.
Twenty-four yes votes. Resolution been properly adopted. Item 22, notaries, Madam Clerk.
We have 24 notaries.
You have a list of those notaries that has been provided to each commissioner. Any questions or comments concerning the notaries? If not, Madam Clerk, please move to the voting screen. Commissioners, cast your votes. Anyone like to change their vote? Hearing no request to change the vote, Madam Clerk, please announce the vote.
Twenty-four yes votes.
Okay, we are moving to the next item of business, which is item 23, and this is just simply information, and it's according to state law. You have in your packet Form CT-02-53, which is a, concerning the recent debt we issued for the finishing the courts building. It has all the information in that, and that is for your review. It doesn't need to be passed. It just has to be provided information for the commission. So that is in your packet. If you have any questions, you can call my office, and we'll be glad to answer those. So that is item 23. Item 24 now, we have some 4H students that have joined us, I think, are going to speak tonight, and I'm going to recognize in the order I have, I have them. And if you'll come to the podium and you are recognized to speak to the commission, and first is Scarlett Binghamman. These students are 4H Honor Club students, and we appreciate them being here tonight and look forward to hearing from them.
Have you ever messed up while public speaking? Or maybe you froze up in front of your audience? It's easy to lose your train of thought while giving a speech. So because of these big mistakes that so many people make, I am going to give you some tips and tricks on how to give a great speech. Number one, writing, organizing, and memorizing. Having your thoughts in order will help you not be as nervous for your speech, because you know what you're going to say and do. The first thing you need to do is to pick a topic to write your speech on. Try to pick something that's not too confusing. Maybe you could pick something that's special to you. Another good idea is to pick something that most people are interested in. That way, you'll keep the attention of your audience throughout your whole speech. Number two, practice. A helpful thing to do is to practice in front of your family or in front of the mirror. Make sure you have note cards to look at, just in case you forget what you're going to say. Remember, practice makes perfect. Number three, have a good attitude. Having the right attitude can change your whole speech. If you're feeling frustrated or joyless, try to get those emotions out before you go in front of your audience. Number four, dress appropriately. Try to dress like you're going to church, and make sure to take a shower if you can smell yourself. You could wear a dress or just a plaid shirt with jeans. Just try to look a little bit sophisticated, even if you aren't. Number five, make eye contact. Try focusing on different people in the room, instead of just staring in space. Make sure to keep your head up and engage the audience. Here are some important things to not do during a speech. Number one, don't read from your paper the whole time. I know it can be difficult to look up at the audience, but if you read from your paper the whole time, it's not really a speech. It's just reading an essay in front of a whole bunch of people. But remember to have note cards to look at, just in case you forget what you're going to say. Just try not to stare down at your paper the whole time. Number two, don't fidget. If you move around too much, the audience will focus more on what you're doing than what you're saying. Try to mostly stay in one place. Remember that you can use hand gestures if you want to. Just don't fiddle with your fingers. fingers the whole time. Number three, don't speak too softly. It can be really easy to look down and not project your voice to the audience, but that's telling the crowd that you're nervous. Remember that you want everyone in the room to hear you, so make sure to speak louder than you think you should. Number four, keep your pace. It's really important to not go too fast or too slow. If you go too fast like this, it can be really hard for the audience to understand what you're saying. If you go too slow like this, it can be boring and you could lose your thought process. So try to have a good pace for your speech. I hope you have found this helpful and learned something new. Make sure to keep your head up, speak loudly, and always have a good attitude. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, very good. Uh, now, next we have Carolyn Binghamman.
Okay. Today, I'm going to be talking about the enthralling but wretched story of a Jewish girl who wanted to make history, and she did. Her name was Anne Frank. Anne Frank was born in nineteen twenty-nine in Frankfurt, Germany. She lived there for five years with her older sister Margaret and her parents Otto and Edith Frank. Anne had a normal life living in Germany. She practiced Judaism along with her education. Anne was the second born in the Frank family. She also had the biggest personality, which brought conflict between her and her mother. Whenever anyone was arguing in the house, it was almost always Anne and Edith. However, Anne's mother did get along with her older daughter, who was a more compliant child. Margaret was continually the one to be doing her chores while Anne was very stubborn. The only family member Anne did feel close to was her father, Otto Frank. He was the one she always went to for comfort, especially in the times ahead, because Anne's country was about to take a step in the wrong direction. In nineteen thirty-three, Adolf Hitler became Chancellor of Germany. Hitler's objective was to roll all Jews in his country and eventually in the surrounding lands, too. Most Germans didn't realize this until about the early nineteen forties. A high percentage of them actually loved him and voted him into office before they realized his intent. One man that could tell that the country was in the wrong hands was Otto Frank, so in nineteen thirty-four, he moved his family to Amsterdam, Netherlands, to get away from Hitler. He also tried many attempts to move to America, but all of which failed. Over the next few years, things got worse for Jews in and around Germany. Hitler started forcing Jewish people to wear stars on their clothing to separate them from others when out in public. And persecution for these people changed drastically, from not letting them into certain shops and areas to imprisoning them into cons- concentration camps. Concentration camps were awful places where Hitler would order his soldiers, called Nazis, to lock up any Jewish person who lived in Germany. Even some of Anne's friends back at her old home were being brought to these camps and being killed. Anne's life could no longer be called simple at this point, certainly not after nineteen thirty-nine, because that's the year World War Two started, and it didn't help anyone a year later, on May tenth, nineteen forty, the first bomb struck the Netherlands. Anne had nowhere to put her thoughts, which were endless by this time, until she received her beloved diary on June twelfth, nineteen forty-two, on her thirteenth birthday. After this, she always had someone to trust in, even if it wasn't a person. She loved this book so much, she gave it a name. It was called Kitty. Here's her first diary entry. "I hope I shall be able to confide in you completely, as I have never been able to do in anyone before, and I hope that you will be a great support and comfort me." That was most likely the best thing that happened to Anne that year, because soon after, her older sister Margaret got a letter saying she had to attend a work camp. The Franks were smart enough to recognize that by work camp, they really meant work to death camp. They didn't trust Hitler at all. So a day later, the family went into hiding. One of Otto Frank's coworkers and family friends, McGeeson, her husband, helped hide the Franks in a hidden space on the third floor of Otto's workplace. This space was called the Annex. There was a bookshelf that covered the secret entrance, so the workers downstairs didn't know it was there. Their curtains had to be closed most of the time, and there were certain times of the day they had to be extra quiet because there were people working in the offices below them. This was extremely difficult for Anne because of her boyish character and childlike energy. When they could talk, there were lots of arguments, especially after the Van Pels moved in. In their family, there was Herman, August, and Peter, and their cat. Anne thought it was very unfair that Peter got to bring his cat because she had to leave her beloved pet back at her house. Soon after, another family friend moved in. His name was Fritz Frer. He was a local dentist who was also Jewish. He then became Anne's roommate in the Annex. Here's an example of what a day was like for Anne in hiding. She would wake up, stay silent till lunch, because that's when the workers downstairs had a lunch break. When they could talk, they were usually doing one of the three: arguing, eating, or listening to the radio for life, for updates on life outside of hiding. Soon, a year had passed in this horrible sort of lifestyle. It was now nineteen forty-four. To keep her mind off things, Anne wrote a lot in Kitty and hoped to fulfill her dream of becoming famous. She wanted to be a writer and to be well-known. That's part of the reason she had fa- she had posters of famous people on her wall during hiding. They inspired her to be a better person. In nineteen forty-five, after two years of hiding, they heard a gunshot below them. Anne was writing at the time. She was frightened when she heard what sounded like a bookshelf sliding against the floor. A few soldiers from the Nazi army walked up the stairs and pointed their guns at the Jews that were hiding in the Annex. This was Anne's last diary entry. "As I told you many times, I'm split in two. One side contains my exuberant cheerfulness, my flippancy, my joy in life, and above all, my ability to appreciate the lighter of things." They got on their shoes and were hustled out to the concentration camps. Unfortunately, almost everyone who lived in the Annex passed away in the camps. The only survivor was Anne's father, Otto Frank. Years later, he published her diary so the whole world could read about her story. Although Anne's life might have ended there, her story continues on. She was positive in the darkest of times and did fulfill her dream of becoming a famous writer, and that was the s- and that was the story of Anne Frank.
Thank you. Next, we have Caleb Springer.
Today, I'm going to talk about five different houseplants that actually do, um, stuff, like move. The first one on my list is the dancing plant. The dancing plant, um, is a plant that, uh, that, um, has, its young leaves move, um, when it relax, uh, reacts to light, sunlight, warmth, and music. The second one on my list is the sundew plant. The sundew plant is a carnivorous plant that is native to North and South Carolina in the wetlands. They, uh, the leaves of the sundew plant, um, have tentacles on them with sweet, um, sweet smelling nectar. This nectar is very sticky. When the bug lands on the plant, the plant senses it, and the tentacles grab the bug, and then the whole leaf curls up, and then the bug is digested. Another carnivorous plant is the venus flytrap. The venus flytrap is also native to North and South Carolina, and, um, has little jaw-looking leaves, and, uh, the bugs are attracted to these leaves. So when they hop in to the, to these leaves, there are, um, there are little hairs inside, uh, the leaves that, uh, feel the bug, and the whole little jaws close. If you, if you own one of these plants, you can just play with the plant and just stick your finger in there and it'll close on your finger. It's also related to the sundew. One of the most interesting plants on my list, um, is the sensitive plant, also known as the zombie or touch-me-not plant. This plant is related, is in the Mimosa genus, and, um, when touched, the leaves, um, the leaves will fold up and the whole branch will droop. It's also related to, somehow it's in the same family as the pea plant. The last one on my list is certainly not a houseplant. This is the squirting cucumber. The squirting cucumber is native to the, um, to the Mediterranean, uh, region, but is covering Asia, because the squirting cucumber lives up to its names, the, its name, because it has, um, cucumber-like fruits that absorb moisture and, uh, and build up pressure in the, for the seeds, and the pressure inside those, these pods are equivalent to if you jumped in the ocean and swam down two hundred and twenty-six meters underwater. Then, the pod is discharged from the plant, shooting sixty seeds up to, uh, six meters in distance. Each little pod can make its own colony. There are a lot more different plant, uh, different, interesting plants, like the witch hazel, that its seeds can be shut, um, it squeezes its sheet, um, its seeds out of its pod, uh, at forty kilometers an hour. There are a lot more of these interesting plants. Thank you.
And finally, we have Beth Springer.
Hi. My, my, my. My name is Beth Springer, and I'm in the ninth grade. Uh, as some of you know, I really like horses, and I... And I have done the four H horse project ever since my first year, and I also was on the horse stretching team. Um, today I would like, today I would like to tell you about a few breeds of horses that I've been reading about. The first breed of horse I would like to tell you about is the Clydesdale. The Clydesdale's colors are bay, brown, black, sometimes, but, and sometimes chestnut, but that is pretty rare. They often have quite a bit of white on their legs and face. Clydesdale mares are around sixteen point three hands tall to seventeen point two hands tall. The stallions are around seventeen, seventeen point one hands tall to eighteen hands tall. The Clydesdale originated in Le- Llanarchshire, Scotland, near the Clyde River, from which the Clydesdale got its name. They are usually used as workhorses. By eighteen seventy-seven, um, interest in this breed of horse spread to other countries, and the Clydesdale, and Clydesdales were soon exported, often in large numbers, to North America, Australia, South America, and Russia. Undoubtedly, the Clydesdale's docile attitude, combined with elegance and great activity, caused heavy horse enthusiasts all over the world to fall in love with it. The second horse breed I would like to tell you about also originated in the United Kingdom. Um, it's, it is the Irish draft. The Irish draft stands at or over fifteen point two hands tall. They are usually white, black, brown, bay, chestnut and bay. Irish draft horses are usually used for hunting and show jumping. The Irish draft is known for intelligence and kind, um, temperament. The third breed of horse I would like to tell you about is the half-linger. The half-linger is usually around fourteen hands tall, and their color is chestnut with a flaxen mane and tail. Um, the origin of the half-linger is not a hundred percent certain, but it is named after the village of Halfling in Italy. The half-linger has an amenable nature, which makes it a great riding and driving horse. Nowadays, half-lingers are used for leisure riding. The half-linger is, um, also known for its longevity. Now, I would like to tell you about my favorite breed of pony, the Shetland pony. The Shetland stands at only ninety, sorry, thirty-nine to forty-two inches tall, and they are any color except spotted. Um, the Shet- the Shetland's story is a Cinderella story. Um, the Shetland started out as a miniature draft animal, um, working patiently in fields and mines all day. Most times, the Shetland would spend its entire life in the mines. This continued for many years. Finally, a happy day arrived for the Shetland. The mines were electrified, and there was no longer a need for the Shetland to work in the mines. A happy thought came to the residents of the Shetland Islands. Why couldn't these adorable ponies become pets? They, they, they are very sweet and loving and very playful, and did I mention very, very adorable? Um, so they did it. The Shetland ponies became pets. Um, sometimes the Shetland would play a trick on someone stealing hats off children or handkerchiefs out of pockets, um, but it was all in good fun. It, it would usually lead to a rousing game of tag. Plus, the, um, the Shetlands are insanely adorable, so you can't stay mad at them for very long. Um, children and adults both loved the Shetland. I hope you have learned a few things from this speech, as I have while writing it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Good job. Yes.
If I may say something, please.
Sure.
You students were so courageous to get up here today. It's tough to get up here in front of adults, people you don't know, and it's, and all four of you did fabulous, and I'm so proud to say that y'all are students from Sevier County. I really appreciate it.
There is no future.
Future leaders out there, people. Good job.
Absolutely. Thank you all. Okay, just a couple more, um, housekeeping items before we adjourn, and that is, remind you that, um, uh, in January, unless there's something coming up, we will not have a meeting in January, and the steering committee has voted on that. Uh, the other item is, today is Commissioner Allen's birthday, and we want to wish him a happy birthday, and... We're not going to ask him how old he is. Yeah, we didn't figure you would, so that's the other thing. And finally, I want to wish everyone here a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you all for being here. And having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
Second, all in favor of adjournings, please rise. We're adjourned.